Thank you, everybody. We are calling to order the Tuesday, July 20th, meeting of the Corte Madera Town Council. Rebecca, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Mongin.
Here.
Councilmember Ravazia.
Here.
Vice Mayor Casissa.
Here.
Mayor Beckman.
Here, thank you. Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. That brings us to open time for public comment, and this is an opportunity for members of the public who would like to do so to speak on any items that are not on tonight's agenda. And members of the public will be given three minutes apiece. If anybody would like to speak on an item not on our agenda, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we receive any email public comments for public open time?
Um. I believe we did. I'm just checking to see if it's related to an item that's already on the agenda.
Great, thank you. And if it's not, if we could just read the first three minutes of it, that would be great.
Yes. Okay, I don't believe this is related to an item currently on the agenda, so I will read it. It is from Phyllis Metcalf. And it says that California Cities for Local Control is a statewide organization made up of many elected officials, planners, et cetera, that has been actively working to maintain local control. It has developed a resolution that has now been signed by 75 cities to support this important mission. The attached information contains a template for a resolution. I urge the council to pass in support of maintaining local control. Mill Valley is the first city in Marin to have passed the resolution. Corte Madera can be the second. Corte Madera cannot ignore local control of zoning is being eroded by current bills in the legislature, Plan Bay Area 2050 and Rina allocations. The council should make every effort to protect the attributes that brought us here. Phyllis Metcalf.
Great, thank you Rebecca, and thank you very much, Phyllis. We do not have any other hands up for public open time, and if there are no other emailed comments, we will close public open time. There are no presentations tonight, which brings us to item four. That's our consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion, and any member of the council or public may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Would any member of the council like to pull any items from our consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll turn this over to the public. If any members of the public would like to pull an item from our consent calendar, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we have any emails regarding any consent calendar items?
No, Mayor Beckman, we did not receive any emails.
Great, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands up, so we will close public comment and bring the consent calendar back to the council for a motion. Bob?
Move items four A through four E.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? Thank you, Fred. And Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Mongin.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casissa.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you very much. That concludes our consent calendar. We have no public hearings tonight, which brings us to item six, our business items. Our first business item is six A, Acceptance of the Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee Annual Report, and I believe I am turning this over to Karen.
Okay, I'm not going to read the report to you. I'm going to assume that you've all seen the report and are familiar with it. Most of you have seen this report come through every year, so the committee met in June, and this is the report that we approved, that was crafted by a staff. And that's basically it. One of the things that I do want to just point out or bring forward is that we are glad to have in the in the use of, one of the uses of the resources from the sales tax is the 2.5 million of those funds being designated as an emergency reserve. You know, this year, more than any year, we're clear about the value of being able to take care of emergencies and to have emergency planning. And so we're glad to have that in there. So that basically is all I want to say. If there's any questions about what's in the report or anything that you want me to ask of the committee the next time we meet, certainly would like to hear from you.
Great, thank you so much, Karen. Do we have any questions from council members for Karen or staff? And seeing none, we'll turn this over to the public for comment. So if any members of the public would like to comment on this annual report, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And our first hand up is going to be from Ava.
Hi there. I'm really sorry, but did you guys just skip general public comment?
Uh, no, ma'am. That was the second item on this agenda.
Okay, you just blazed through that. Can I make my general public comment now?
Let me consult with the town attorney. I'm going to ask Amy Ackerman, our town attorney, to speak to how we might accommodate a general public comment later in the meeting.
Thanks, because it took me a while to get into the actual call.
Sure, thank you, Ava. We're gonna, we're gonna ask Amy right now if she can weigh in on how we can accommodate.
Okay, thank you.
Um. You know, there's, there's, there's no specific law on this matter, but you know, the legislature is in favor of allowing public comment on matters within the jurisdiction. So, you know, I would encourage the council to hear the public comment, even though it's out of order, I think in particular in these circumstances, where some of us are not as facile with the technology, I think it makes sense to go ahead and hear the comment. I mean, I do understand if you might want to pass it until you finish this item and then take it, but I do think we should, we should take the comment.
Great, thank you very much, Amy. So Ava, what we're going to do is we're going to wrap up this item six A, and then we're going to reopen public comment, and we'd love to hear from you then. So that'll be in about a minute.
Terrific, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, I do not see any other hands up for public comment on this item right now. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on item six A?
No, Mayor Beckman, we did not receive emailed public comments on this item.
Great, thank you. So we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion and a possible motion. Who'd like to start us off? We'll go with Bob.
Great report, Karen. Thank you so much for all your work on this. Really thorough, really simple, really easy to understand. I'd like to move to approve.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
I'll go ahead and second it.
Great, thank you, Fred. And I would just like to second Bob's comments. Thank you, Karen, to you and your colleagues for doing this. And Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Mongin.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casissa.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you very much. That concludes item six A. We're going to reopen public comment real fast to take a comment from a member of the public who was not able to make open time. So opening public comment again, and we're going to start with Ava. Ava, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for accommodating that. I had put in a call to Mr. Todd Cusamano. I didn't get a response. I called because there was a death that occurred on November 29th. And this occurred under the freeway overpass. It was an unhoused woman, actually someone I had attended high school with, who was president of her high school class when I was a freshman, and we swam on the same high school team, and she went on to swim for Stanford. And she died unhoused under the freeway overpass. And this was reported in the Marin IJ as a death. The, there was no cause of death in the very interesting IJ article about this. So there were two. One of the first was written by Lynn Murphy of San Rafael Police Department. And she mentioned that the woman had suffered from mental health issues and substance abuse. And I thought, oh, that's interesting, but she didn't name the person. I went to the coroner's office and I looked at the date and I realized with great shock that this was once a very promising young woman. And so I had more questions, especially when I realized that the cause of death listed in the coroner's office had nothing to do with what San Rafael Police had reported, or that Lynn Murphy of SRPD had reported. In fact, the coroner's report notes the primary cause of death as a lack of insulin. And what I found interesting about the toxicology report is that she had no alcohol or drugs in her system. I had, prior to going to the coroner's office, I had done a CPRA on the city of San Rafael, and I had found some pretty shocking emails. It turns out that Katie Rice, the supervisor, she was then president of the Board of Supervisors, was in the habit of denying room key rooms to unhoused people. And, and I have continually asked Supervisor Rice if this individual, this poor woman who died in the cold under very humiliating circumstances, under a freeway overpass three days after Thanksgiving, was one of the women who had been denied a room key room by her very wealthy supervisor, Katie Rice. Anyway, she hasn't answered that, which I think tells you something. But I, I don't think that this individual should be forgotten. She was unhoused for approximately three decades, if I understand the correspondence correctly. And she deserved better. I do, I understand that there's a lot of concern within the county and the cities talking about this. But I think we do need to look at our policies much more carefully. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ava, and thanks for letting us know about that. Sorry to hear about that unfortunate loss. Yes, Todd.
If I may, and Ava, I apologize if no one got back to you. I did refer your email to the California Highway Patrol as underneath the Tampa Pius Overpass, where I think this happened, is actually the jurisdiction of the state of California and the California Highway Patrol. And so if no one's followed up with you on that, I'm happy to help facilitate that later this week, and so I apologize for that.
Is it, would it be okay if I contact your office again, and we can talk about this? Because I understand that it's, it was not your jurisdiction, but apparently this individual, who I will not name, was frequently in your jurisdiction.
Ava, absolutely. We're going outside the Brown Act, so email me and let's talk about it. I'm happy. It's just not my information to give, is all.
Yes, of course. Thank you, sir.
Great. Thank you so much, Ava, and thank you, Todd. Appreciate it. We do not have any other hands ups. We're going to close open time for public comment again and resume our business items. And we are on six B, which is discussion and possible action to approve Second Amendment to Agreement with RPLG for Town Attorney and Special Counsel Services, et cetera, and I will turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you may be aware, within the staff report, we provided some background, but some of the important dates I want to point out to you regarding this item. The last time we amended this contract was on July 12th of 2019. As you all know, on October 21st, 2020, our attorney Teresa Stricker accepted a new job for the city of Richmond. I think she may be regretting that about now. But anyway, and in her place, the town named our very own Amy Ackerman as the interim town attorney, and she's held that position to date. The council discussed the contract, contract services in a closed session. One of the things that came out of the closed session is the council appointed an ad hoc legal services subcommittee, Vice Mayor Casissa, Councilwoman Mongin, and myself. And what we did is we evaluated a series of, you know, legal services options. And our recommendation is that we renew this contract and amend it. Within this amended contract for the next year, basically our town attorney services will stay flat at $305 an hour. The specialized services will also stay flat at 335, and there's a $10 increase recommended for attorney services that are performed, I'm sorry, that are for legal fees and cost reimbursements for private parties and other sources beside the town general fund. I'll tell you, from my own perspective as town staff, and then I'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor Casissa and Councilwoman Mongin. I've worked with a handful of town attorneys, some really good ones. We named one of them, and Teresa, I'll tell you that Amy's by far head and shoulders above all of them. She understands our staff. She knows what we need. She's responsive. She's very articulate. She's just the best at what she does. And so our, our hourly rate is higher than most in the county, but also I think there's a track record of some really complex claims, some complex issues that we've faced as a staff over the last year, but I think Amy, Amy's guidance has really steered staff through that with flying colors. So we recommend that we renew the contract. We've also, at the same time, council, when Teresa stepped down, council had a discussion of, just for a small community, of really looking at legal services and evaluating, you know, in-house counsel to contract services, like most of the small jurisdictions do, which we do now, or a combination thereof. And so we've, we've retained Sloan Bailey, who is one of our retired council members. And he's doing kind of a white paper on just what up and down the state of California, what agencies are sized, the pros and cons of some of these options. And when that white paper is done, the intent is to work with Vice Mayor Casissa and Councilwoman Mongin, as well as Amy Ackerman, to provide a presentation to council later on in this year on, on their findings. But at this point, I'll stop now. You have the amended contract that is attachment one. There are a couple grammaticals on the first page, first paragraph. 2019 needs to be stricken from that first paragraph. It's at the end, and there's a couple other grammaticals that we'll make changes on. But the recommendation is that you authorize a town attorney to enter a contract for legal services for the next year. And with that, I'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor and Councilwoman Mongin. If there's anything else you'd like to add.
This is Fred. I think Todd pretty much said it all. I think we're really satisfied with Amy's performance and her insight into issues that are far above, I think, any of us as far as complexity. And I think key part is staff seems to be extremely happy with her and her work. And like Todd also mentioned, is that while we were retaining the services, Amy, and the building rate is a little bit higher, I think we've been fortunate enough. And when I say the past four or five years where legal cases have been minimized, at least within Corte Madera, knock on wood, hopefully, you know, it stays that way for a long time to come. But I think part of that is due to the city attorney that we've had and Amy's assistance in working some of those cases. And we are moving forward probably later this year, maybe earlier next year, with Sloan's white paper, which may give us some options and give us more direction, which way you want to go. So again, I think we should move forward with the recommendation. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Fred. And Lila?
I think everything's basically been said. Yeah, I think, I think we've been lucky to have Amy and the services at that firm, but it also makes sense to just make sure we kind of know what our options are and make a deliberate decision when we have the additional information from Mr. Bailey.
Great. Thank you very much, Lila. If that concludes the staff report, we will open this up for questions from council members. And I'm not seeing any hands. I know two of our council members are on the, the subcommittee. If there are no questions from council members, we're going to open this up to public comment. So any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Beckman. No, we did not receive any emails for the comments.
Great, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands up from members of the public on the line, so we will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion and a possible motion. Who would like to start us off? Fred?
Yeah, again, I think I've already voiced honestly my happiness or the pleasure with it with Amy, so I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Great, thank you. And I saw Bob's hand up.
I'll second.
Great, thank you. Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Mongin.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casissa.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you. And I also want to thank, of course, Amy for, for her fantastic counsel to us thus far. And I think the best thanks we could offer is removing that interim from your title. So thank you very much, and I know we all look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you. I'm very old school, or maybe I'm just old, but to me, public service is really an honor and a privilege. And, you know, I've been around for a while, and this is just an absolutely wonderful position to have such really just skilled and kind staff and a council that really works together in the, in the interest of the community. And it's, it's not about egos or anything like that. And honestly, a really engaged and involved public. This is really, you know, this is, this is local government at its finest, so I feel really satisfied and very, very appreciative with this opportunity. I also want to let you know, one thing that you get with me is experience. So while our rates are a little higher, our attorneys are quick. And so I think that that balances out. And I will say that, that my, the partner with whom I work most called, called me almost stupidly efficient. I had to unpack that a little bit to kind of figure out if that was a compliment or not. But just so you know, I am almost stupidly efficient. Again, thank you so much for this opportunity. I really do appreciate it, and I really enjoy this position.
Well, thanks again, Amy, and congratulations to Corte Madera's new town attorney. And with that, we will move on to item six C, which is discussion and possible adoption of Resolution Number 352021, authorizing the town manager to execute an agreement with the county of Marin to provide funding for Housing First Case Management in an amount not to exceed $41,497. And I will turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This staff report and the work that the recommendation has really started at the MCCMC level with the homeless subcommittee, which our very own council member of Ravazio is a part of. And so this has been a longstanding issue. The staff report goes back to 2017, gives a little bit of background of some analysis within what homelessness look like, looks like in Marin County. One of the things that came from the MCCMC Subcommittee that was really successful is at the bottom of page one, and it's the coordinated entry. And it's which officially kicks off, it kicked off in October 1st of 2017. But really what that did is it focused on over 330 of the most vulnerable people experiencing chronic homelessness and, and helped them find housing and then really just re, reincorporate them into the communities and then help them find jobs and to be self-sustaining. Two dates since 2017 of the 330, over 90% still remain housed. And so that, that's been really successful. And one of the ongoing programs has been the Housing First. And it's the Section Eight Housing Vouchers, as well as that case management on that coordinated entry, really successful. But it has to be self-sustaining, and it, right now, it's not. And so San Rafael and the county in Nevada have spent a lot of time of trying to evaluate how to continue this great program and make it better for the next three to five years. And with COVID, it, it added a whole bunch of elements of, of issues for our county. And so some discussions that came at the MCCMC level and then down to the city town managers and the county administrator is what's before you today of taking some American Rescue Act monies from each of the jurisdictions. So we need $2 million to sustain this program for the next five years. And depending on how many agencies jump in on this, this request, which I believe will be over 90% of our, our communities within Marin, will join this effort. We can scale it up or down depending on that $2 million threshold to get there. Some of the issues that you've seen post-COVID are, are, are discussed in the discussion part in the first paragraph of the staff report. We've seen large homeless encampments at Lee Garner Park in Nevada, Central San Rafael Viaduct, Boyd Park, Dumphy Park and Sausalito are just a few. We've also seen an increase within our own community in Corte Madera. And so one of the things that our experts tell us are the coordinated entry. We need to put our efforts into this program and is self-sustained for the next five years. And so with that, and with some of the federal government monies that are now being available with the Biden administration, we believe this will self-sustain this really good program, really successful program for the next five years. With it, we're, we're using a population-based formula, and so on that $2 million, the county of Marin is going to pay for half, 50%. And then based on population, the rest of our, our smaller communities on the city-town side, our levend jurisdictions, will pay based on a formula of population. Our formula is $41,497. And what that'll do is that'll help us, again, increase and maintain the voucher program, which will also give some priority to our very own residents in our community that need that assistance, as well as the case managers, ensuring that we can continue that for the next five years. Again, I covered the fiscal impact. It's a $41,000 request to give me the authorization to put Corte Madera's name in the hat to support this program moving forward. I will tell you that the town anticipated approximately $900,000 in American, I'm sorry, $1.8 million in American Rescue Act monies. With the help of Mayor Beckman, Nancy Hall Bennett, and the League of California Cities, that has been increased to $2.3 million. We just received the first 50% payment of the American Rescue Act monies this week. And so the request is to set aside $41,000 for this program. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on this report.
Great, thank you so much, Todd. And we're going to go to questions from council members now, and we'll start with Bob.
Yeah, Eli, is it okay if I just make a couple of comments? And Todd, I apologize. I should have mentioned to you when we spoke today that I had a couple of additional items I just wanted to add to this, if that's okay? Because we had a meeting with supervisors Damon Conley and Katie Rice and the Homeless Committee on Friday about this very topic, and I just have some additional information. First off, for the $2 million, I think all the other cities are going to participate. It looks like the county is going to be putting 1.2 million into the 2 million. And hopefully, what we're going to be able to do is hire four case managers. And we think that's important to do that now, because the county has access to 100 vouchers. And if we can find, get people and get them set up in the program, we can get them the voucher, we can get them into housing. Todd talked about Housing First. We have a 94% retention rate once we get people into housing. And the Housing First policy has been really successful. What we did was we stopped checking for alcohol, drug, any other issues. The whole goal is get them into housing, and then we think everything else will take care of itself, and that's exactly what's been happening, and it's been really successful. Since COVID started in June 2020, we have housed 60 homeless, 60 homeless families in Marin County. And then the final point I just wanted to make is these are Marin natives, as you heard from our public comment tonight. They have done surveys numerous times, and the vast majority of these people are Marin natives, so we are helping Marin natives with this money. And I hope we have your support in putting our portion in on this, because we've been really successful with this program. We hope to continue to do so. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Bob. And I'm sorry, you told me you wanted to make comments, and I didn't realize that it was additional background information. Thank you. Any questions from, from council members right now for staff or for Bob relating to his work on, on this committee? And if there are none from other council members, I just have one quick question, just out of curiosity. I was wondering, this formula that, that spits out our number, and our number is totally reasonable, but I was just curious, is that based on total population or estimated homeless population?
I believe, I'm sorry, go ahead, Todd. You would know.
Our total, total population.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you both. Any other questions from council members? And if not, we're going to open this up to public comment. Per council policy, we'll be doing three minutes a person. Any member of the public who'd like to comment on this item, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org, and we will start with Ava.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I think this is interesting. I, I do want to explain that I've been investigating the, the total picture here in Marin County for some time. And the information retrieved through CPRA in the last year has been really telling. I do want to remind the council that the California State Auditor demanded an audit of homelessness monies. We spent $13 billion on homelessness in the past three years in the state of California. And with all that money, we didn't manage to build a single, a net single public restroom or net single public shower. Of course, if you're old, like I am, you remember when there were public showers and there were public restrooms before everything got privatized. So I, I urge you to, to, to look a little bit deeper at, at some of the nonprofits which have been frittering away money like in, in a pretty shocking way. And some of these entities that are being involved in this, in this current process in the county, like Homeward Bound, we found that some of them have actually been charging unhoused people for shelter beds and congregate shelters. So it's a really, it's a very unregulated nonprofit landscape. It's been criminalizing and infantilizing unhoused people. And what I'm really seeing in some of the encampments that Mr. Cusamano mentioned, And what I'm really seeing in some of the encampments um that Mr. Cusamano mentioned um is a real effort on the part of unhoused people to organize amongst themselves and to be part of the solution for themselves. And what I think is so fascinating is that this really mimics um the democratic structure um that was implemented by the WPA and the FSA uh during, during the Great Dust Bowl Crisis, uh when California was inundated with unhoused uh migrant farmers. And the most important aspect of this was really um the, the democratic structure of, of these encampments. Um, and of course, they provided um, you know, basic amenities that with thirteen billion dollars in modern day California, we haven't been able to think through, but they went right to where the unhoused people were. And they, they built these, these large kind of emergency shelter housing things. Like, some of the, the housing structures looked a little bit like if you've ever been to Camp Curry um in Yosemite. It's, it's basically uh a wooden platform and kind of like short walls with a canvas top, very classic California camping. But then there were um public restrooms, public showers, all that sort of thing. But the, the really, the most important ingredient is, was treating unhoused people with dignity and get, giving them a part in the democratic process. I'm happy to talk to Mr. Cusamano about this later. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Ava. And I am not seeing any other hands up at this time. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this item?
I'm just checking. And no, we did not receive any email public comments.
Great. Thank you. Then seeing no other hands up, we're going to close public comment and bring this back to the council for discussion and a possible motion. Who'd like to start us off? Lila.
I just wanted to say I think this is a good effort. Um, even though Corder Madera hasn't, you know, experienced one of the homeless encampments, homelessness is a problem throughout Marin County, and we all need to be, you know, trying to, to deal with the solution, be part of the solution. Um, I also like the point, I think that Bob made about them being, a lot of these people are Marin natives or people that live in Marin or are from Marin, and um, this is about, you know, extending a helping hand where we can. And given the excess um funds that we were able to procure, this is a pretty small amount. Um, so I would support this. And thanks for your work on it, Bob and Todd.
Thank you very much. And I saw Charles' hand.
Yeah, I also can support this. And um, oh, I don't think we can do enough for the people right now. Um, especially when you see other areas where they're not treated with so much dignity and humanity and, and it, um, I think it weighs poorly on um everyone to see that. So um, I think it's a huge deal. I also, Eva bringing up the public showers because of the work that Bob uh enlightening the council over the years has told me. I know that there's mobile trailers that moved around in the past uh that provide shower services and stuff. I don't know if Eva's aware of that, but of course, in talking to Todd, maybe um she can find out about that because I think that that was and has been a great program for beyond um, you know, recent uh events and something that I, I'm proud that our community does for people. Um, so that's all I had to say, but I can definitely make the findings and support this and look forward to continuing it for an indefinite time. You know, I feel like everyone always says the reason that it, it's become such a problem in California was we stopped those programs a long time ago, and that that ultimately, if you have the programs in place, you don't have the, the issues. Um, and so the only way we can do that is by government is to choose to support it. So I'm happy to do so.
Great. Thank you, Charles. Any other comments from council members? Yeah, Fred.
Yeah, I too. Um, I'll echo what's been said already and won't repeat, but I can support this also. I think it's a program that's necessary. I think we need to step up as a town and, I want to say, do our civic duty and support it.
Great. Thank you, Fred. And I agree with, with everything that's been said. And I just wanted to again thank uh both Bob and our staff for, for not just being a willing partner on solving homelessness in Marin, or at least making progress on solving homelessness in Marin, but really, I think, being very proactive uh in a way that is, you know, reflects well on, on, I think, our values here in Corder Madera and in Marin County. Um, so thank you guys for your work there. And I would invite a motion if there is no further discussion. Bob.
Uh, yeah, just one quick comment. Uh, mobile showers are continuing throughout the county. They make several stops a week, and it has been one of our most successful programs. We're continuing to fund that as well. And I will move to approve this.
Great. Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Great. Thank you, Lila. Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Avazia.
Yes.
Senator Cesar.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you very much, Rebecca. That brings us to item six D, which is discussion and possible adoption of resolution number thirty six, twenty twenty one, amending resolution number O six, twenty nineteen, which is the Parks and Rec Department Fee Schedule to add a rate schedule for before and after school childcare, and I will turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor Beckman and council members. Um, uh, so I'm just here to talk about the staff report that I put forward that's going to hopefully add some fees for child development after school program that we currently were running this year at Neil Cummins School. When I was digging into it, I realized we didn't have any rates. And so um I, I looked back and it, there were rates a while ago, but for whatever reason, they, when the program that we were running went away, the fees went away too, which is not really nor, normal for me. I was surprised by that. So um, what I did was a little bit of digging around about what we had charged when we ran our kids' club program that was discontinued in two thousand eighteen, what the Twin Cities Childcare Program, which was discontinued in two thousand nineteen, charged. And then I dug into what we charged in San Rafael for after school when I was working there. Um, and what uh like programs in Marin are charging for after school, and really did kind of a dive about, you know, what rates seemed appropriate for what time period. So um, that's sort of a little bit of background of what happened. And then this year, when COVID happened and the Twin Cities program folded, um, the school district approached this department to see if there was some way we could support the uh virtual learning for students whose parents were either had to go to work or they were essential workers as a way to sort of um keep them up to speed and, you know, provide them assistance in the classroom. And our staff did that, and they did a really good job. Um, and then as the school year morphed and changed, um, and the students went back to more of a full time education system like nor, more normal, because it wasn't normal, it was semi-normal. Um, our staff jumped in and did more of an after school recreation program. And that's what we're hoping to continue is, is a, a typical, what I would call a typical childcare program. Um, I've been working with staff to see what that's going to look like, but the big thing today is that we need to get rates back in and approved so that we can market the program and hopefully get the program full um for both before and after school. So I'm happy to give you more background on my processes, or if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you very much, Rochelle. Do we have any questions for staff uh on this item? Rebecca, I see your hand up.
No, thank you, Mayor Beckman. I was just looking at the staff report online, and I just wanted to point out in case it caused any confusion. Um, I think the attachments were transposed, and the very last two pages of the PDF that the staff report links to through the agenda are supposed to be the Exhibit A to the draft resolution, and it lays out the proposed rates where it says a before school rate, a kindergarten part day rate, a kindergarten full day rate, an early dismissal day rate, grades one through five rate, and then the, the suggested rates for non-school days. So those are all, um, the last two pages of that PDF are to be the Exhibit A to the draft resolution, and that's where the proposed rates are.
Great catch, and thank you for the clarification there. Uh, any questions from council members? We'll start with Fred.
Yeah, I just uh for the public, just one bit of background so that people know Rochelle is with the Park and Rec on a contract basis. And I think she has thirty five years of experience with San Rafael Park and Rec. Um, and she's on a contract basis because our regular Park and Rec Director Ashley is out on leave. Um, so with that, just one question is, I know the fee is pretty, would be pretty much said, do we do anything for low income families or families in need that may not be reflected in the fee schedule?
Yes. So there is an existing um scholarship program uh that folks can apply for additional funds um through the department directly, and um that, that'll be promoted when the program is promoted. The fees that are stated would be the full time full fee, and then the scaled down version for folks who qualify for scholarships and are accepted into the program based on need um then would pay a percentage of that, which I'm not, I'm not positive, but I think what they've been doing here before is fifty percent of fees would be paid by folks that have scholarship, that receive scholarships, and the rest would be from a pot of money that was donated um over a, a period of time.
Okay, thanks.
Great question, Fred. Thank you. Any other questions uh for staff on this item? Lila.
Thanks, Rochelle. I just was um trying to get a sense of how this is, how these rates are different than, than they last were. So looking at that last page, it has rates for fiscal year fifteen sixteen. Was, were those the same rates up till twenty eighteen when the program closed?
That, that's how it appeared to me. So what I did was I just took a, like a three percent cost of living accre, increase and applied it to that over the period of years to get to where it would have been if we had continued the program, if that makes sense. And then, um, yeah, and then I just sort of, well, I, how I came up with the rates, we're like, are we above that? Are we below that? And based on my experience working in childcare for a very large chunk of my career, it's just a difficult thing in terms of staffing. The reason why it's not just a straight hourly rate is because it's difficult to get staff to work the morning hours. Um, and it's easy to get staff to work between three and six. So because of that, it is a little more difficult, and that's why the fees are a little bit more, if you're looking at by the hour, than it would be if we did it straight across the board. There aren't any programs that have the same hourly rate straight across the board that I looked at. And I looked at six different programs, including our own. So, so I, I feel confident that the rates are fair and not excessive in, in terms of what folks have been paying already.
Great. Um, well, great. Thank you for doing this and doing that research and to figuring out where we had come from. I know, you know, I have kids at Neil Cummins, and I know lots of friends that use this, have used this resource in the past, and it's really an important um benefit that we, that we provide to the community there.
Great. Thank you, Lila, and uh we'll go back to Fred.
Yeah, sorry. Rochelle, if I can remember, maybe you just kind of clarify this. That rate, it's a drop in rate, correct? So parents don't have to sign up for four or five days, correct? Can you just maybe explain that? So there's.
Right. Um, thank you. So the model that um, at this point, because the program is newer, um, I, I was, when I was talking to staff, they felt like the flexibility of being able to select days um and not be locked into three days a week or five days a week would be attractive to people. And my experience in child development programs is when a program's starting, it's easy to do that, right? You can put it out to people, they can select what days they want. Um, and, and I kind of think that what happens eventually is the program really does get used a lot by folks who are working full time. Well, since we don't know what full time work is going to really look like in reality right now, um, we just felt like the flexibility of letting them self select days and changing them by week um would be the best way to be able to accommodate as many people as possible. Um, so, right, so the rate, the daily rate would be the rate for any days they picked, whether it's two days a week this week and three days next week, or one day every week, or five days, it's the same rate no matter what.
Yeah, thanks.
Great. Thank you, Fred. Any other questions from council members? And seeing none, we're going to turn this over to the public. So any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org, and our first hand up is from Ava.
Thanks so much. Um, I want to applaud you on, on doing this. I do want to point out a couple of things. Um, it, it's not clear um what outreach you're doing to the Latino community um on, on the, uh, I guess there's scholarships, so you can get some sort of discounted rate. Um, but that seems really important because what we've seen in the pandemic is that um the Latino community in the canal, but in also, also in other parts of uh Marin County, including Corder Madera, uh, was, was some of the worst affected because their um housing is so cramped and it's, it's multi-generational. Um, because they're earning very low wages, working for the very businesses that, you know, fund the city. So they're, they're kind of paying twice in a way. And it seems really important that, to do that kind of outreach because these really have been the people who kept things going as essential workers. Um, I do want to point out, um, since it's, it is a discussion of Parks and Rec, um, that we, I have, I have collected multiple testimonies from unhoused people um throughout Marin County. I just want to gently um point out that the mobile showers have been very costly and very ineffective. Um, and they have not, especially during the pandemic, um, there was a period of time when they weren't operating at all. And so we ended up uh with unhoused people in Marin County. We were the only county in, in the entire Bay Area that was refusing to provide food and water to encampments. And that's per a statement by Andrew Henning that, that I retrieved through CPRA, um, that was several months into the pandemic. So we're really behind on this stuff, and I, I think it's nice that, you know, we go to these nonprofits and they come up with crazy ideas like, we'll put showers on a mobile unit, and it will be just as good as when we used to have public showers with our Parks and Recs Department where people could drop in and it was reliable. And what we set up is a very costly, this is such a metaphor for the thirteen billion dollars spent in California that, that just withered, you know, just dissipated without actually doing anything. We need to use the money to build actual structural things that, that will be good, not just for unhoused people, but, you know, as we see with global warming, uh, you know, you are going to need some sort of emergency housing plan. Uh, because whether it's floods in Germany or whether it's uh huge fires right now up in Oregon, um, you know, we need, we need public structures and uh mobile showers aren't, aren't doing it. But uh, I do hope, I do hope we can, you know, I know, I know everybody likes to talk about equity and everybody likes to say they're doing things. And you guys are really well positioned to kick the tires on every nonprofit that you're working with and on every program that you're working with and make sure that it's actually doing what it says it's doing because it's a lot of work for people like me to run around doing CPRAs and write articles. But in the end, what we're finding is that a lot of this money has been grossly mismanaged and has punished.
Very much, Ava.
It's supposed to serve. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I am not seeing any other hands up at this time. Rebecca, did we have any emailed public comments on this item?
No, Mayor Beckman, there were no emails, public comments.
Great. Thank you. Then seeing no other hands up, we're going to close public comment and bring this item back to council for discussion and a possible motion. Who'd like to start us off? Fred.
Yeah, uh, first of all, I want to thank Rochelle for all her hard work. Uh, I should say it this way, but I think the number part, coming with the fourteen dollars, I believe it is, is kind of like the easy part. I think all the programming and the work you've done behind it, I think is great. I think tying in with Neil Cummins School is a real plus. Um, and the flexibility the program gives, I think it's going to fill a true gap with parents, and especially the part where they can just drop off, they don't have to worry about committing to a number of days. I think that's great also. Um, one thing is, and I thought I saw in the staff report where you said something about other fees, I would like to see at some point in time, Todd, maybe down the road, is, I think we should be doing analysis of all our fees under Park and Rec. Um, I was on Park and Rec, I think, for five, six, seven years, and we've never done that before. Um, and when I say analysis, it was always shoot from the hip where, oh, we should raise it a few bucks here and there. But I think there should be a full analysis across the board. But other than that, um, yeah, I can totally support. I think it's a great program.
Sorry. Thank you very much, Fred. Um, and worth noting that Fred is, is a, a former chairman of our Parks and Rec Commission. Uh, so he's got a lot of experience in that department. Any other comments from council members? And if not, we'll invite a motion. Oh, Rebecca, I see your hand up, then we'll go to Bob.
Thank you, Mayor Beckman. I just wanted to take the, this opportunity to say that that was one of the i- items that I had actually asked Rochelle to hopefully be able to work on before she transitions out. Um, since she has the skill set to evaluate our fees, the Parks and Recreation Commission is due to review their fee schedule, a full um review of the fee schedule. That's why the recommended action is to just amend the current fee schedule that's currently adopted. Because an overview, a review of the full fee schedule will be undertaken this fall and brought to council to hopefully go into effect January first. And Rochelle does have um a lot of ideas on ways to evaluate the various fees that we charge for these for fields, um, facilities, the whole gamut of, of fee options. So we're going to take a long, hard look at that.
Great. Thank you very much, Rebecca, and we'll go to Bob.
Yeah, I'll move to approve resolution number thirty six slash twenty twenty one.
Yeah, I'll move to approve resolution number thirty-six slash twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Looks like Fred. Thank you, sir. Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Yes.
Councilmember Monken?
Yes.
Councilmember Ozio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casissa?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you very much. And that brings us to item six E, which is discussion and possible adoption of resolution number thirty-seven, twenty twenty-one. Approving the memorandum of understanding between the town of Corder Madera and SEIU. Employees of the town commencing July first, twenty twenty-one and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And I will turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So really, the next three items are all combined. In the request. So you have the MOUs for the department heads, SEIU, as well as the mid managers. You will notice that we're asking respectfully to consider approving the MOUs tonight. This is a unique request. And so full disclosure. You know, in past years, we've really focused staff with council. Anything related to salary and benefits is a, is a two-meeting item. And so we presented the first meeting and we asked for approval or make any changes, bring it back to council for approval at the second meeting. Reason why this request is coming in a single motion is because I do not consider this to be controversial in any way. Depending on how the council and/or we hear from public comment. If we do, and it is controversial, then obviously it's a two-meeting opportunity. But I'm asking you to consider this in one meeting. And the reason being is because we're going dark in the month of August. And so we're not going to come back to you until September seventh. Based on the last twelve months of unprecedented time with COVID, I want, I want to, I want to show the appreciation to our staff. And to get the, get them what they deserve of their hard work earned over the last twelve months and their performance. And so I want to put that out front with council. But again, if you're uncomfortable about that, or if we have a lot of public comments. Staff recognizes that this is normally by practice, a two-meeting kind of discussion. With that, I'm going to go into the SEIU. SEIU is the Service Employees International Union. That is our Public Works Maintenance Team. It consists of eight and a half full-time employees. We've held two closed sessions with council about this. And so the quick summary of what we're looking at, we're really looking at a simplified agreement. This is a three-year agreement. And we really focused on three years with a two percent increase in year one. A three percent increase in year two and a three percent increase in year three. That is held true for all of our labor units. So Central Man Police Authority is a three-year tentative agreement. It's a two-three-three. Central Man Fire Authority is the same. It's a three-year agreement, a two-three-three. And then what you'll see in the next three MOU. The, the next three MOUs that we're going to go over, it's the same. It's a three-year contract, two percent year one, three percent year two and three. The proposed MOU also focuses on, we wanted some consistency. And so we did a side letter a couple of years ago and we added a wellness program for mid managers. And it was really successful. And what we did is we incorporated basic benefits that we had. We had some childcare benefits, we had commute, commuter benefits, and we had wellness benefits. And we combined them into a fifteen hundred dollar pot of money to be used any which way, depending on your situation as an employee. It's been really successful as the mid managers group. And so in negotiating with SEIU and, and the, and the maintenance team, we wanted to incorporate the same thing. A wellness program up to fifteen hundred dollars, based on their needs of our specific employees in that unit. They really focused on wellness. And so you'll see within the MOU, there's specific things that it can be used for. But it's up to fifteen hundred dollars per employee per year. The other one is, we revised section ten point six. It has to do with the retiree medical account. And so the current MOU, basically years one through three, you do not receive any, any funds. Towards your health savings account. Years three through ten, you get twelve hundred dollars. And then eleven on, you get fifteen hundred dollars annually. What we did is we revised it down. And so we're recommending that we, after year one, when you're off probation and you become a full-time, non-provationary employee. You start to receive that twelve hundred dollar benefit. So basically, instead of receiving it in year three, you would now receive it in year, after year one. Of being off probation. With that, on page two of the fiscal impact, you can see what the costing is for a two percent increase, a three percent increase, and a three percent increase. You also, the two percent increase effective July of this year is already included in the adopted budget. So there's no budget amendment necessary. The above costs also include the CalPERS retirement and payroll taxes. Also, the big thing as we focused on in past years, and really this last year, when we refinanced our unfunded liability. How does this raise impact future unfunded liability? And this is within the margin of our analysis. So the analysis that council spent eighteen months on evaluating recently on the unfunded liability. Within that projection, when we go in the out years, we projected CPI increases to be two point seven five percent. So if you look at this current recommendation of a two-three-three, three-year salary increase contract. The average is two point six six percent. So we're within that margin. We're actually a little bit lower. Also with that, adding this wellness benefit to the eight and a half employees, if they take the full benefit this next year. It has a twelve thousand dollar expenditure cost to the town. And then also by revising the health savings account. From three years of starting to receive that twelve hundred dollar benefit, bringing it down to one year. It impacts one employee, it's twelve hundred dollars. And so with that, I'll stop there. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the SEIU MOU.
Great. Thank you so much, Todd. And as you said, I just want to highlight again for members of the public that the council has already been through this twice. Todd walked us through this very clearly in a couple of closed sessions. So this is not new to the council, even though this is the first time it's being brought up in, in open session. Do we have any questions from council members for staff on this item? Fred?
Yeah, just one quick question, Todd. And I may have missed it. I think there's, there's another federal holiday, I think that President Biden signed into effect. I didn't see that within the agreements. I don't know if that's something you add later, or if it needs to be put in, or if there's a catch-all phrase.
Yeah, we're probably going to treat it as a floating holiday, Mr. Vice Mayor. And we're, we're really, there's still some work to be done on that. And we'll probably take a side letter to the council. After some discussions, we want to discuss this kind of county-wide and be consistent with our county employees. But it's, it's most likely it's going to be treated as a floating holiday.
Okay.
Moving forward.
Great. Thank you, Fred. Good question. Any other questions for staff? And seeing none, we're going to open this up for public comment. So any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom. Or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this item?
No, Mayor Beckman, there were no emailed comments.
Great, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands up. So we will close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion and a possible motion. Bob?
I'll move to adopt resolution number thirty-seven slash twenty twenty-one. We have to do them all three separately, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Then I'll do thirty-seven slash twenty twenty-one.
Great, thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Lila. Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Yes.
Councilmember Monken?
Yes.
Councilmember Ozio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casissa?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you very much. That concludes six E and brings us to a similar and related item six F, which is essentially the same thing. With regards to mid-management employees and the resolution is number thirty-eight, twenty twenty-one. And I will turn it back over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, the only addition to the mid managers, again, the mid managers are basically the core of the employees of our town. It's approximately up to twenty-five full-time employees. And again, same information. We want to mirror these MOUs and keep them consistent with all of our groups. The one addition here is section twenty-six, that again, this, this health club reimbursement, health. Wellness kind of a program started with this group. And so we did some cleanup language within this MOU for section twenty-six. We also added a side letter that had to do with mobile technology expense allowance and accounting for holidays. That was a side letter agreement that we approved in September twenty-sixth of twenty nineteen. And so we just added that into the MOU. And again, the health savings account contribution of twelve hundred dollars, that, that adjustment is consistent with you just heard with the SEIU group. Again, the costing of a two percent, three percent, and three percent increase over the next three years are on page two under the fiscal impact. That is within our budget. It includes the CalPERS retirement and it's within the two point seven five percent projected. Margin for unfunded liabilities moving forward. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Todd. Any questions for staff and council members? And seeing none, we'll turn this over to the public. If there's any public comment, please raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. And Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this?
No, there were no emails, public comments on this item.
Great, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands up. So we will close public comment and bring this resolution back to, back to council for discussion and a possible motion. Fred?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve resolution thirty-eight, two oh twenty-one.
Great, thank you. And Charles seconds. Thank you, Charles. Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Monken?
Yes.
Councilmember Ozio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casissa?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you very much. And finally, the third part of this trifecta is resolution number thirty-nine, twenty twenty-one. That's item six G, which is approving the same MOU update for our department heads. And I'll turn it back to Todd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this, these are the, your department heads. This includes five full-time employees. This does not include your town manager. So I'm not included in this. This is all of your department heads. Again, it's a, the salary increase, it's a three-year agreement, two-three-three. The proposed language of the health club reimbursement, health and wellness account mirrors the SEIU language. Additional, this is a new one, and so for council to consider. But as you may recall, we normally, it's common practice in most municipalities, especially with our JPAs, our police and fire authorities. To allow up to forty to eighty hours of admin or vacation buyout annually, depending on a certain criteria. Always at the discretion of the, of the town or city manager. As long as the budget is available for this payout. This helps us control, you know, liabilities being carried over into the following year. Historically, the town, since I've been the town manager, we have not allowed that. It's been a case-by-case basis. Last year, because of COVID, you know, your staff wasn't able to use a lot of their time. And so it was, you know, on admin leave, it's use it or lose it annually. And so the council allowed us in a one-time effort to, to buy out up to a certain amount of time. And so that's really been the one exception since I've been your town manager since twenty sixteen. And really stepping back and thinking about it, evaluating what our cohorts do. I'm recommending up to a forty-hour. Buyout of administrative leave based on town manager approval. And my approval would be based on policy, which is, do we have the budget? And what's the criteria for you not, first of all, I want people to use their time and take time off, because it's all about wellness. The council's been really clear on that. So why have you not been able to use your time? And if you haven't, and you have a good reason, then the second step is, okay. We'll allow you up to forty hours. Do we have the budget? And if those two criteria are met. Then I would, I would consider up to a forty-hour, you know, buyout of that leave. And so that is new to their MOU. It's for your consideration. Again, I think if you look at what, what we do with police and fire within our JPAs and within the county. About seventy-five percent of the agencies have this language in their MOUs. But historically, we've handled it on a case-by-case basis, which I'm, I'm fine doing with you. But I also am asking for consideration to give me that authorization on an annual basis. You know, to consider up to a forty-hour buyout. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, the fiscal impact is on page two. If you were to allow people to buy out, let's just say all five full-time employee department heads. It would be up to twenty-two thousand dollars annually. And again, that's something that I would evaluate in May. At the end of the fiscal year, do we have the money? Can we afford it? If it was a budget amendment, that's something that I would have to take to you, the council, to justify why I'm asking for that budget amendment. And with this, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, sir. Any questions from council members on this? Seeing none, we'll turn it over to members of the public. If any members of the public would like to comment on this item, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email publiccomment@tcmail.org. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments on this item?
We did not receive any emails, public comments.
Great, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands up from members of the public on the line. So we will close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion and a possible motion. See a hand from Charles.
So, and Todd describing the, the buyout, the, the term, good enough for government work comes up. Not because I think it actually applies, but quite the opposite. I think that before and during COVID, our directors really came at a lot of really unique challenges. But I had seen it for years before that as well. And they love their job and they love to see the community thrive through their work. And so therefore, if they get addicted to work and they, they see nothing else. It's the least we can do to, to find a way to reward them for that kind of dedication. So I think that's a great ad. And I think the community can only benefit from that, as well as the directors, if they choose that direction. So, yeah, with that, I, I just think this is a great negotiation from our town manager. To secure during a very difficult employment cycle. And retention and just getting reward and everything. It's just across the board, really good job, Todd. And I'm very excited.
Thank you.
Agreed, Charles. And thank you. Any other comments from council members? And if not, we'll take a motion. Bob?
Move to approve resolution number thirty-nine slash twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? Charles, thank you. And Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Monken?
Yes.
Councilmember Ozio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casissa?
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you very much. That concludes our business items and brings us to item seven, which is council reports. And we'll start with the town manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and I just, I just want to just first state my appreciation for you all. You know, we as staff, you know, sometimes it's hard to look outside your own little box every day when you wake up in the morning and go to work. And to work for a council like this and a community like this, thank you. For having the trust in us and rewarding the team for their hard work. And I will pass that message on to them. And they have a deep appreciation for all of you. So thank you so much for that. Three quick updates. And Rebecca, if you have any other updates, I've been in Cabo this last week. Having some downtime, so I'm trying to get back in the swing of things today. This is my first day back. But a couple of quick things. So you made, a few months ago, council approved the internship program. It was, it was kind of one of the first of its kind. We have a lot of really good discussion with the council on, you know, what you would like to see from that program. We hired Dimitri Copeland from it. He graduated college and he was assigned to the planning team. Dimitri has just really excelled. He's fit in, he's just been incredible. And there's an opportunity. There's a promotional opportunity for him. And we have just promoted him to assistant engineer within the planning department. And so just really excited about a program that we started up with the help of RJ and the council. And it's really, we're starting to just homegrown within our own community. Really great talent for the town of Corder Madera. And so thank you for that. And I'm excited to share that with you. One of the other things that is really, has one hundred percent of my attention over the next couple of months. And it's something I've been working on for the last year. But it's, it's, it's within the building department and our building and permitting processes. It's number one on my list. It's, I think it's something that we all. On this call, have a frustration over for various reasons. The state of California has a lot of requirements that make it difficult for staff. But it doesn't mean that our processes have to be difficult. And I think, you know, for, since I've been here, you know, we only know what we know and we need to be better. And so my number one project has been to put all of our resources within that department. To really streamline the process the best we can and to really focus on customer service. And so there's a series of changes that have been going on. It's been painful because there's a lot of permits going through right now. A lot of people are doing exciting projects within their homes. We need to support them. I just want you to know that I recognize how important it is. And I know that, you know, ultimately, I'm going to be judged on the success of, of, of our service. And we're focused on it. And we're, we're seventy percent there. And the last thirty is, is going to happen, percent is going to happen over the next two months. Just bear with me and the community, if there's any complaints or any. Just bear with me and the community. If there's any complaints or any concerns, please contact me directly, and we're going to work through it together. But I'm excited about looking ahead within the department because it's going to be pretty special. I think we're going to have one of the best departments in this county. But we know we need, there's some improvement to be done there. And the last piece, I just, Daria took a took vacation this this week, and so a long-deserved vacation. But she shared some information with me before she left, so I wanted to share with you. Again, we received the American Rescue Act funds. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, with the help with Nancy and the league of really telling our story for Corder Madara. Again, we were anticipating one point eight million in Rescue Act monies. We're going to receive approximately two point three million. We just received the first one point one six six million this week. And so we're going to take a a staff report item to council in September on what you want to see done with the monies, what the criteria is to use it, and how you expect staff to expend those funds. And so we will bring something to you. The first forty-one thousand has been decided tonight, and we'll bring an item to the council and the community in September. The second really exciting, surprising piece of news is that tentatively our estimated close of the operating general fund for this last fiscal year, June thirtieth of twenty twenty one, we're anticipating a one point five million dollar surplus. The reason why it 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 actually goes back to some of the work of the planning commission and the planning department and this council and economic development and some of the policies that you've approved that have allowed some of the proactivity that people don't see every day of what we do behind the scenes, of working with our business leaders, trying to recruit certain types of businesses for long-term sustainability. And 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 really, the driver of that one point five million is the electric car dealerships. We have four of them now following the Tesla model. And what you're going to see in this next year, it's going to turbocharge our economy and really carry the day. And it actually helped us carry a little bit through COVID. And so that one point five million dollar surplus, we'll have some discussions when we close the books in August, September, and come back to you. The last piece of our economy to truly recover is going to be the transit occupancy tax, the hotels. And so again, we're continuing to work with the chamber and our business community of how we can increase tourism over the next few months to really recover hopefully sooner than later in that arena. So all really good news. We have labor peace with our five major labor groups for the next three years. We're the only city that can say that in the county of Marin. And so that's, I think everybody on this call should tip their hats to each other, and you should be acknowledged for that. And so thank you for allowing us to be creative, and thank you for your leadership. And thank you to to Daria. That's why I let her take the week off, you know, all good news. Good stuff there. So with that, I'm I'm happy to stop. And Rebecca, if you have any other updates for the council, I'm happy to turn it over to you.
No, I I think you you covered everything. The only other things I know about are likely going to be covered by council members in their updates.
Great. Well, thank you, guys. Todd, great news. Great work, as always. Fred, question?
Yeah, I was gonna say, Todd, maybe you should go on vacation more often.
I do want to say that didn't miss a beat with me being God, and that's a, yeah, great staff, so.
I'm sorry, I do. I know you just came back, Dave, but one other question for you. Do you see us in September? And I know staff, I think, has been working on this, going back to in-person meetings, hybrid. What do you see in September? Because I think Nevada went back to in-person meetings this month or so. And I'm just trying to feed it up to the public.
So you may have seen the Marin IJ article about that, Nevada did go back. Most of us, we're always looking at September, and and we're no, we're no different. We've always focused on September with the with with the recent changes with COVID and what's going on. I think what you're going to see with us immediately this week of going back to the pre-June fifteenth restrictions of of indoor wearing mask, making it mandatory at our at our city, at our town buildings. So that impacts meetings potentially. And so our goal, and I think seventy percent of the the county and the town's no different, we're focusing on September, is going live for in-person meetings. But it's a caveat of, let's see how August goes, because there's just so much going on right now. But we will be positioned, if we think we can do it safely, to do September. And definitely in September, we have a a council workshop. We want to have that workshop in person, like that workshop of our strategic planning with the council needs to be in person. And so we're we're focusing on September, and I think Amy wanted to add something.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, the emergency order, there are the Brown Act allows for teleconferencing, but under the usual standards for that, you actually, each teleconference location has to be a public meeting. And this was passed really to accommodate a few really large geographic districts. I think there is an eight-county water district in in the Central Valley, and it just was so impossible for them to get together. So the emergency order allowed some changes to those teleconferencing, so you don't have to open up your homes, for example, to the public as part of the public meetings. Right now, I think September thirtieth is the date for those orders to be lifted, in which case you'd have to go back to in-person meetings unless, again, you want to have your homes, public meeting sites, which I don't think anybody wants. But, you know, I will tell you, the advice is is changing constantly as the rates around Delta variants is and the health orders are changing. So I'm I'm constantly, I had another board that was going to go back in person and, you know, and they were going to do a hybrid and then in person, and then drafting the language over, you know, masks are required for unvaccinated, but now we have new health orders recommending masks for everyone. So I think it's a really fluid situation, and we'll just keep you up to date with how things transpire over August.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Todd or staff on his report? Charles?
So my only question for Todd is if if ultimately that meeting in September needs to be public, and and we're not quite there yet overall, and weather permitting, is there the, couldn't you do outdoor public meetings, or could we do it in a larger hall? And, you know, on the stage and that kind of thing that would allow people the the space to feel more comfortable to come into that environment? Just something to think about, I guess. But I don't know if the if it's if that would, something like that would be allowed, so we could have both.
Yeah, I think it's a good question. And so if if we're where we are today, I wouldn't hold a public meeting. If it improves, then my my thought is in September is to use that strategic planning session as the first public meeting. And as you just said, use the community center. We have space. We can do outdoor. We could do it in the morning, right? And that's our first one. And then to go from there, evaluate as we move forward. But we could use the community center, as you said, as an open space to to do something. But we we have some technical things to work through that poor Rebecca has to work on. But we we are working on it. We're positioning ourselves for September.
Great, thank you. And with that, we're going to move on to council member reports, and we will start with Charles.
Nothing to report. I have my TAM meeting in two days, so I'll report in August, I mean, September.
Great, thank you, Leela.
I just had a report, an update on the cause of why Fred would have this one, too. We had a little movement in terms of planning our community meeting to discuss the upcoming changes of the cause of what on the plans for renovation. We really would love to get community input on that. And we've settled on the date of Tuesday, August third at four P M., and that will be over Zoom. And the town will continue publicizing that date, but just wanted to get it out there for anyone who might be interested in joining us.
Great, thank you. Bob?
We had a meeting of the Marin Wildfire Protection Association. Everything is continuing to move along at the county level. Just one quick item. Our executive director visited the work that MMWD is doing on Lagunitas Rock Springs Road up on TAM, which any of you can go up and take a look at. And he was extremely complimentary. That's kind of work we're planning to do once we get rolling in a few months. And he said it will be very effective at retaining fire. So we're hopefully going to be doing a lot of that in the next year. That's it. Thanks.
Fantastic work. Thank you, Bob. Fred?
Yeah, I attended the Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness Committee. I also tend, there was also a special medium H-friendly Corder Madara last week. On August eighth, we're going to be celebrating and honoring our ninety-plus-year-olds, Corder Madara residents. We're going to do the same thing we did last year, which is actually visit their homes, since we can't really do anything in person. And just last thing, I just want to give a quick shout out to RJ and his team. Work began on the safe routes at school, the bicycle path on Paradise Drive. And at first, it looked like it looked like a construction zone, which it is. But I noticed that they're really moving fast and just like the way that they have the whole, how they're rolling out the whole thing. So it looks like it's moving along really fast, and appreciate RJ and all his team and all's work. That's it.
Great, thank you, Fred. And I noticed that, too. I could not believe how quickly they're moving on that project, so that's awesome to see. I just have three quick items. One, I had a CMSA meeting last week, Central Marin Sanitation Agency. Only big thing to report there is that we've just signed a new ten-year contract with MCE to continue selling green energy that we generate from biogas. So that's awesome. League of Cities had a North Bay Division meeting last week, and it was a panel discussion on public safety, featuring our very own fantastic police chief, Mike Norton. So he joined us. Chief Norton and the chief of the Vallejo Police joined us along with a league policy analyst. So this policy analyst basically laid out what the the three major, you know, policing-related bills are that are brewing in Sacramento right now. And we got to hear Chief Norton and and the Vallejo Chiefs' insights on these bills. Long story short, is all three were looking pretty concerning, both to elected officials throughout Northern California and to police departments, just looking like they're fairly draconian. I I think a couple of these bills, you know, the the chiefs were thinking there would, there's likely a way to get to yes by continuing to work with the legislators, and the legislators seem open to that. At least one other bill was looking like, you know, the the legislator behind it was not particularly amenable to any sort of, you know, compromises that that might make the bill something that I think, you know, public safety officials might find more pragmatic. So that, you know, that that was really helpful to hear about. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, broadband discussion. I spoke with a couple of officials from the county of Marin. I was just trying to get a sense of what the state of broadband coverage service in Corder Madara is. This is, you know, obviously, a discussion that a lot of folks have been having nationwide. I was surprised to learn that Corder Madara is actually very well-served. They said that according to their kind of survey, there were only like two houses that don't have access to broadband, which is not to say that every house has opted in, but there's, you know, very few houses that don't even have the option. So that was good news. You know, obviously, a little room for improvement there. That came as a surprise to me. And what I learned about is that the county of Marin is is working on, I'm sorry, guys, it's late for me. I can't remember what the name of their their program is right now, but they're essentially putting together a consortium of, you know, local officials and like industry representatives, trying to work on essentially a countywide pilot program to see if we can get municipal broadband up and running in Marin County. Long story short, I'm going to report back to you guys. They told me they'd keep me up to date, so I'll report back to you if there's anything that looks like it could be of use to Corder Madara there or any ways in which we can be partners. And I'm sure that Todd knows much more about this than I do. They've been working with MMA. Rebecca's got her hand up.
I believe it's Digital Marin.
That's it, yes. Excellent, thank you. Digital Marin. So that's what I learned about. That's the the countywide project. So that was interesting, and that is all I've got to report. Item eight, discussion of draft agenda. Do we have any comments on our draft agenda for the first September meeting? Yeah, Rebecca?
Thank you, Mayor Beckman. This wasn't available at the time of publication, but MMWD did reach out to see if council would like to receive a presentation on the latest developments as related to the drought situation in the county and the latest Marin Municipal Water District activities from their board. And we said that, yes, we would like to have a presentation so that you you can expect that presentation at the September seventh meeting.
Great, excellent. Thank you very much. If there are no comments, other than that, we do have a brief SD two meeting that we have to get through. So we're going to adjourn the meeting of the Corder Madara Town Council and call to order the Tuesday, July twentieth, meeting of the Sanitary District Two Board of Directors. Rebecca, could we have a roll call, please?
Board Member Lee?
Here.
Board Member Monken?
Here.
Board Member Avasio?
Here.
Or Vice President Casita?
Here.
Board President Beckman?
Here, thank you. And hey, RJ, good to see you. We're going to go to open time for public comment now. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to any items that are not on our agenda, and members of the public will be given three minutes apiece. If you'd like to speak to anything not on the agenda, please raise your hand via Zoom or email public comment at TCM mail.org. And Rebecca, did we receive any emailed public comments for SD two open time?
No, we did not receive any emails public comments.
Great, thank you. And I'm not seeing any hands up, so we will close open time. We have no presentations, which brings us to our consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require further discussion. Any member of the public or the board may pull an item from the consent calendar for further discussion. Would any members of the board like to pull an item from our consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll turn it over to the public. If any members of the public would like to pull an item from the sanitary district consent calendar for further discussion, please go ahead and raise your hand via Zoom or email public comment at TCM mail.org. Rebecca, did we get any emailed public comments for consent calendar items?
No, there were not any emails public comments.
Great, thank you. And I do not see any hands up, so we will close public comment and bring the consent calendar back to the board for discussion and a possible motion. Bob?
Move items four A through four D.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? Thank you, Fred. Rebecca, could we have a vote, please?
Board Member Lee?
Yes.
Board Member Monken?
Yes.
Board Member Avasio?
Yes.
Board Vice President Casita?
Yes.
Board President Beckman?
Yes, thank you very much. We have no public hearings and no business items, which brings us to item seven, district manager and board member reports. RJ, did you have anything to report?
We have two business items, I believe, second reading, or did I go out of order?
Those are on the consent calendar, at least on the copy that I have. Is that correct?
All right. My apologies. My mistake. No, nothing to report.
Great, thank you, sir. Any board member reports? Any comments on the draft agenda for the next meeting? And if not, then we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night. Todd, welcome back. I hope hope Cabo was excellent.
It was.
I can't tell if you're, I can't tell on the screen how tan you are, Todd.
I got rid of the farmer's tan. It's good. I'm sunburnt.
All right, well, take care, everybody. Bob and Amy, congratulations again to both of you on your different different things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good August, everyone.
Yes, have a good August. We'll see you in September.
In September.
Everybody, bye.
Bye.